...Colton AMEZ Church, Norfolk, Virginia. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. May we pray. Oh God, as we gather here tonight, we pray, oh God, that your presence will be felt in this place. We pray, oh God, that you will lead and guide us tonight by your will. God, we ask that you will continue to bless the city council meeting. Lead and guide our mayor and his council. We pray, oh Lord, that you will continue to bless the city of Norfolk. We pray now, Lord, hear our prayer. Oh Lord, and incline thine ear to us and grant us thy peace. In the most powerful name we pray. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to declare that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which the justice is for all.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Good evening again, and for the benefit of those who do not regularly attend our council meetings, our procedure tonight is to take up ceremony items first. Next, we'll take up public hearings, then the consent agenda will be voted on in the block. If any member of the council or the public wishes to discuss an item, it will be removed from the block and considered separately. Following the consent agenda, we'll take up our regular agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. Upon the completion of the agenda, we'll take up any new business to come before the council. To address the council, you should have registered with the clerk prior to 7:00 PM outside of the council chamber. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments and remarks to three minutes.
Mr. Clerk, PH1.
Public hearing run scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving a lease agreement between Belair Station LLC as lessor and City of Norfolk as lessy for the lease of a portion of property owned by Belair Station located at 1500 East Little Creek Road and authorizing the manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Mr. Clerk, no one wishes to speak? Please call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement between Belair Station LLC as lessor and City of Norfolk as lessy for the lease of property owned by Belair Station at 1500 East Little Creek Road, authorizing the manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $43,917.36 from funds heretofore appropriated to cover the rent payments for the remainder of the fiscal year 2017-2018. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, C1 through C12 will be voted on in the block. However, there is one person who signed up to speak, Carol Mickens, but did not indicate whether you are proponent or opponent of C11 and C11A. Do you wish to speak?
No.
No, we'll call you. You wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, we will remove C1 and C11A from the block. Other persons who have signed up to show your support on C1 through C11 but did not indicate that you wish to speak. So therefore, we will take C1 through C10 and C10A in the block.
Okay, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, the motion is to approve the consent agenda with the exception of C11 and 11A. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I just want to make sure that included C12.
Yes, I'm sorry, C12.
C12 with the exception.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. All right, so, C11, I will call the proponent first, then I'll call Herb Callpepper. All right, sir, do you wish to speak on, or are you standing by for questions?
I don't need to speak, I'm just a property owner.
Yes, sir. All right, so, Ms. Carol Mickens.
Good evening.
My name is Carol Mickens. My address is 6566 Stony Point South in Norfolk. I'm here on behalf as representative of our Newtown South Civic League. Not for against the Wawa's because that's not going to change. However, on the Stony Point South side of the street, there is just one way into the neighborhood and one way out of the neighborhood. And I was wondering if there was a way that we could have that, the edge of that intersection widen. Because since the Taco Bell has been built and they've been in business there, we have seen an increase in the flow of traffic when we exit the neighborhood that way. And at that traffic light, you can't turn right. You have to wait until the traffic light turns green. So the traffic can easily back up into the neighborhood. So I was wondering if there was a way to consider widening that roadway so that there could be a lane to turn left and a lane to turn right without having the single lane of traffic that backs up all the way into the neighborhood.
All right, stand by. Mr. Newcomb or someone from Traffic Engineer, Mr. Homewood himself, please come forward.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was an issue that came up at the planning commission public hearing. This is, if it's approved and moves forward, we'll have to go through the psych plan review process. This sort of access issue is the sort of thing that would absolutely be covered in the psych plan review process. Because it's been brought to our attention, we've noted it, and it will be looked at specifically as the neighborhood has requested.
All right, Ms. Mickens, Mr. Homewood is your person of contact, and he will...
Aye.
This has to go through a process, and he will flag and note what your remarks. So George Homewood, he will exchange his number, and he'll be your point of contact.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming.
Stay on it, Ms. Mickens. Stay on it.
All right, so, Mr. Clerk?
So, C11 and C11A, Mr. Clerk. Approve C11 and C11A. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R1. R1 is an ordinance accepting the bid submitted by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for a long-term wireless facilities franchise agreement with a term of 10 years with up to three renewal terms of five years each in the city's rights of way. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R2. An ordinance permitting Thomas P. Hose III and Patricia D. Hose to encroach into the right-of-way at 6151 Studley Avenue with hardscape landscaping and gravel. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R3. An ordinance to amend and reordain Sections 42-53, 80, 89, and 99 of the Norfolk City Code 1979 so as to change the title of the Transportation Engineer to the Right-of-Way Administrator and to add subsection M of section 2-2, 237.2 so as to provide for a division of rights of right-of-way, describe the responsibilities of the division, and the duties of the Right-of-Way Administrator. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R5. An ordinance approving the terms and conditions of a right-of-entry and license agreement between the city and Mission 22 for an outdoor visual arts project installation at the Larchmont Library property and authorizing the city manager to execute the right-of-entry and license agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this thus far. This is going to be a great public art installation. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
And to add what Mrs. McClellan's saying, if you take the Elizabeth River Trail up to the Norfolk Library, you can get your exercise and also see a wonderful art installation. So this is a very exciting, I think we're the first ones, aren't we?
I think so.
Get this. So it's a big deal for Norfolk, so please enjoy it. Thank you. Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R6. An ordinance approving a lease agreement between Dominion Tower LP as landlord and the City of Norfolk as tenant for the lease of office space at 999 Waterside Drive and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R7. An ordinance approving an agreement with the Norfolk Law Library, the Norfolk and Portsmouth Bar Association, and the Circuit Court of the City of Norfolk for the operation and management of a law library in the new Norfolk courthouse. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, do you have other matters?
I have two additional items, Mr. President.
Please read them.
The first is numbered R9, and it is a resolution appointing or reappointing 38 persons to seven boards, three commissions, and two authorities for certain terms.
Mr. Smigel?
There's one addition that needs to be made under section 11. Ann Boland needs to be listed as the representative for the East Ocean View Civic League because she's the new president for that. But she, I think by ordinance, she has to be the one appointed, and then she can designate John Green to cover her. But she, I think the way that the ordinance was written, the Civic League presidents have to serve as that. I know she said that, but I...
Okay. Corrections been made?
Corrections been made?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clerk? Adopt the resolution. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R10, Mr. Clerk? R10 is an ordinance to cancel the regular weekly city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 7, 2017 at 4:00 PM. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Everybody go out and vote, November 7. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Before we do new business, will you all please join me in wishing the gentleman from Ward 5 a very happy, happy birthday. Tommy Smigel turns...
Twenty-one.
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 Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Happy birthday, Tommy. All right, thank you. New business, the first person that we will call is Michael Candlewall. Candlewall.
Michael Candlewall, 635 West Princess Anne Road in Norfolk. Good evening and happy birthday, Tommy. I'm the executive director of the Muse Writers Center, and I'm here to speak with you about the vital importance of arts funding. I only have three minutes, so I'll give you a quick review and give you some printed material afterward, and also a snapshot of the Muse, which has become one of the top 10 literary centers in the country. What I want you to remember is that arts means business. And I want to start by speaking nationally about national figures. From the newly released report by Americans for the Arts, nonprofit arts and cultural organizations generated $166 billion of economic activity, $63 billion in spending by those organizations and an additional $102 billion in event-related spending by their audiences. They supported 4.6 million jobs and generated $27 billion in revenue to local, state, and federal governments, a yield well beyond the $5 billion in arts allocations by those governments. Five billion in funding by government agencies returned 33 times the investment. So remember that number. Let's compare that to the previous report in 2012. The arts generated $135 billion of economic activity with $4 billion governmental allocations. So, but again, four billion divided by that number is still 33 times the return on investment. An increase of funding by all governmental agencies by 20% or a billion dollars still created an increase in return at the same multiple. So it always increases. What's the takeaway? Increasing funding works and returns windfall to the communities. Let's talk about Norfolk now, because here we are in Norfolk. For fiscal year 2016, not counting the major organizations, the Norfolk Commission on the Arts and Humanities granted about $245,000 to 31 organizations. The audience participation reach of these organizations was more than 225,000 people. It's amazing. During that time, Norfolk arts groups created 458 jobs. The city received direct revenues of $113,000 in admissions taxes, facility rentals, and parking. There were more than 450 community outreach events, and nearly 22,000 people participated in every neighborhood and city, in the city, and more than 48,000 children were reached. More than 3,700 people with disabilities and 13,700 military persons were served. Our organizations put more than $5.8 million into our local economy, a 2,300% direct return on investment. But funding levels without the majors dropped from $331,000 in fiscal year 2007 to about $248,000 in fiscal year 12, and has remained flat since then. So I'm standing here before you all today to say, arts funding works. Increasing the city's funding to the commission's grantees will absolutely create a giant return on investment. Remember that number 33 times. When you allocate, what you allocate comes back 33-fold. Now I'd like to invite commission members and grantees to stand up and say thank you to the city council. We very much appreciate your support and hope that you'll consider increasing our vital funding.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much for coming. And thank y'all for your service to the city. Thank you very much. Good to see all of you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Graves?
I just want to say, this young man here, who's the police officer security, he was on it because he saw the bag and didn't know what was in the bag, and he quickly came up to make sure that there was nothing detrimental in the bag.
All right.
So thank you for keeping us safe and paying attention, sir.
Mr. Candlewall's a very violent person.
He does look suspicious.
He does look suspicious, yes.
He's scared. He was on it.
He uses art as his weapon.
All right, Danny Lee Ginn?
I reside at 3845 Dare Circle. Now you've said that you've been tired of hearing about my complaining, so I brought you some more literature that points out other people's opinion. This is not an old article, but I think it's a very potent article that addresses concerns of citizens to all of you. Specifically, I underlined just the last part of it, which says, "Still, it seems that Norfolk's, that some Norfolk officials have forgotten that their every action is under our microscope because of Burford's misdeeds, and that they must go above and beyond at every turn to demonstrate transparency and rebuild the public's trust." Let me read that for you again. "That they must go above and beyond at every turn to demonstrate transparency and rebuild the public trust. That remains the only currency that matters here, and Norfolk officials are still coming up short." Not my words, the Virginia Pilot's words, where over 100,000 people read this article as well as I do. It addresses a concern that I have. You see me every week. I've asked you to address bullying, racism, and to eliminate a section that strips the people of their First Amendment rights in this very chamber. You seem to want to ignore that. You seem to think that it's unimportant, but the people that I keep talking to say they want to see it done. They want to be respected, they wanted to see transparency, and they want to not have something on that says that they can be stopped simply because city council does not like what it hears. So I would advise you to heed their message and mine and move towards that direction.
James Charman?
Good afternoon, council. Hi, y'all. I came to see if I could shed a little light on a situation. I always wanted to do something in life that would help a lot of people or a multitude. Many people say used as an excuse, they didn't do well because they didn't have a father in their life and that type of thing. I'm here to tell you, I have no excuse to fail. I have two fathers. I have my heavenly father, and I have a father earthly that we affectionately call Willie Chee. And my father had a vision, and his vision causes him to be a lot smarter and a lot wiser than myself, who he saw having a college education. He said to me, "I missed my opportunity to get my education, but I made sure that your sister and you receive yours." So in that trend of thought, all I'm trying to do is see that the kids at the Southside Stom Academy, my personal seed comes up. The Bible speaks of leaving your children inheritance. I will submit to y'all, what better inheritance could you leave them than to graduate from an accredited school or education? What happens is, I think all of us had have times we lost a paycheck or a portion of money. It affects you, but it affects you in a small window of time. When a child does not have an accredited school or the education from an accredited, it starts a trickle-down effect. Colleges won't accept you because you didn't graduate from an accredited high school. That determines your income and your salary. In effect, it steals from your paycheck your entire life. I do not wish that to happen to my seed or many of the seeds that I see that I have came to love and admire and help. Kids can't speak for themselves. They have to have somebody speak for them in lots of cases. I'm not complaining. I'd like to end by saying a couple of words to you. It's a lost art. Many people have forgot it. I've been before y'all several times. I like to say thank you for raising their awareness and holding Norfolk Public Schools and the school board at a higher level of accountability than in the past. I see some changes and some betterment in that process. I hope that your efforts collectively and corporately will help see my son and others like him graduated from an accredited Norfolk public school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Johnson?
My name is Mary Johnson, and I reside at 1719 Pope Avenue. And I come here tonight because I have this problem. I sent an email to Robert Tahan, George Homewood, Lenny Newcomb, the assistant director, and to you, Mr. Mayor, and I realized that you are busy, so you probably didn't see my email. Mike Manook and Cynthia Hall came to my house and insisted on going into my backyard without giving me a reason why. I let them know that I suspect who had called them. We have a neighbor who has been constantly sending the policemen and calling the city inspectors to come to my home, not just mine, but others in the neighborhood. So my husband and I conceded to let him go and let them go into the backyard. My husband and I had informed them that the landlord, our landlord, told us that they cannot go into my backyard, but we did it anyway. And Ms. Hall stated that she could get my landlord into trouble if I didn't let them go into my backyard. So we did. And while they was in the backyard, she asked my husband if he ever sold drugs. So what kind of question is that? She didn't tell us why she had come to our house. So Ms. Hall gave us 60 days to take care of the yard, because my husband had cut trees down and we were waiting for trash days to take them out. So, but Mike Manook, he came back in two weeks. My hus, he requested my husband, and I told him that he wasn't at home, so you're going to have to talk to me. So, and he insisted on going into my backyard, and I asked him if he had a warrant. I talked to my lawyer, "You can't go in my backyard." He invaded my space, got in my face, and said, "Yes, I can go in your backyard." And I said, "Well, I'm going to call my lawyer." He said, "Call your lawyer. I'll see you in court," which is what he did. She gave us 60 days. He only gave us two weeks. So I sent another email addressing his behavior, and I even spoke to his supervisor, Robert Tahan, face-to-face. Still, it seemed as if no one had addressed his behavior. It is my understanding that Mike Manook had, was just recently promoted. I'm trying to understand what the city criteria is for promoting a public service who does not respect the people of the public. This is someone who has been suspended for same issue that I'm addressing. He was aggressive, unfriendly, and right abusive in how he addressed me. While I'm not trying to get him fired, I think that is appropriate that someone need to address how he deal with people. If he is going to allow to continue working in his position, whereas he has to deal with the public, as a citizen, I trust that people are being put into positions who will be helpful to citizens, not individuals who throw their weight around and don't care about the citizens. I request a formal apology and update on how this matter is being handled, and the and update on how this matter is being handled, and the assurance that Mr. New never show up at my property again. Moreover, please train your people to respect the common citizen when they show up on your property. Being strong-armed unnecessarily by the public service is inappropriate and unnecessary. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Johnson, before you go, I'm going to put you with Mr. Homewood, right, George Homewood. Are you Mr. Homewood?
Yeah.
You know him?
He got a letter, too.
All right. Please see him in the back, and then the city manager who, who's the deputy?
Winter.
Winter. Mr. Bender, right here. The guy sitting behind Mr. Homewood. All right. Her name is Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Graves would like to say something to you.
I just want to, I just want to apologize to you for the way that you were spoken to, because I'm a big proponent of customer service in the city of Norfolk, and you helped pay our salaries and those of all our cit, all our city employees. So I do want to apologize to you if, in fact, you were spoken to in a way that was unprofessional and uncourteous. That is unacceptable, and we need to make sure that those individuals who are dealing with the public on a daily basis, if they had a bad day, they can leave that at home, and they can deal with the, the citizens and the residents in an appropriate manner. So we apologize.
Thank you. I worked public service for 31 years, and I know how to treat people.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Johnson. See Mr. Bender. All right. Thank you. Ellis W. James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Mr. Douglas Smith, my favorite city manager. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place here in the city of Norfolk. I want to thank you, Mr. Smith, this afternoon for an excellent review of some very serious manners. But I got the shock of my life when someone, also a fine city councilman, suggested that maybe, possibly, the airport at the city of Norfolk might not any longer be needed. I'm glad that Michael Candlewall came today. Golly, he gave you a whole list of reasons why we need our airport. It doesn't take a genius like Ellis James to give you the rundown, but he's going to make a stab at it. Don't worry, I don't have a bag with a knife in it. We have football games at universities. We have military and families who need to get in and out of Norfolk, to meet ships, to see people off. We have 100 different reasons why we need this economic driver in the city of Norfolk. The International Airport ironically even serves the botanical gardens. People come, and while they're waiting to make another connecting flight, they walk in the gardens. What a great way to promote another very positive aspect of our city and our life here. I would urge my friends on the council to please consider the list of reasons why it's so important to have an effective Norfolk International Airport here in Hampton Roads, and we should not make any concessions to the people, our friends on the peninsula. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. James. Jane Bethel?
It's been a while. Mayor Alexander, Vice Mayor Whibley, city council members, employees and residents of Norfolk. My name is Jane Bethel, and I reside at 719 Douglas Avenue in Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm the president of Local R4200, the National Association of Government Employees, better known as the City of Norfolk General Employee Union. I'm a former employee of the city of Norfolk for 24 years and am currently retired. What is supposed to be a more transparent government with this fairly new council is sadly missing the mark. I have been instructed by Mayor Alexander and City Manager Smith to try and schedule a meeting with them, but have not yet been given access to either gentleman. So just as their predecessors, I believe they are not interested in some of the problems that are plaguing city employees that I represent and the general employee retirees that I am now a member of. While there are many issues I would like to address, time does not permit it, so I will address only two at this time. The first is the totally screwed-up pay system that was used as an excuse to take away premium pay from the wastewater employees and other pay issues like the loss of comp time hours and alleged over and underpayments without any accountability. I am asking for an independent, detailed audit of all general employee pay, beginning from just before the new payroll system was implemented until the time the audit is completed. My second issue is that I would like to publicly address is the lack of compliance with the state-mandated portions of the grievance procedure. Specifically, I'm speaking about the lack of whistleblower protections that are mandated by the state. I am asking that the grievance procedure that the city uses be immediately modified to comply with state mandates, and that those employees who were terminated for whistleblowing have their cases examined to determine if retaliation was a factor. Thank you for looking into these matters, and I am hopeful that the mayor and city manager will want to meet with me on other issues of concern. I've provided copies of the Virginia Code concerning the grievance procedure mandates. What I have enhanced with bolding and especially the highlights is what is deficient in the city's grievance procedure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.